Senator Hardey?
Here.
Jessica Hines, Henson. Blount Dresch.
Here.
Tom Heck.
Here.
Steve Joseph is next.
Can you stand with the pledge first?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On behalf of the board, I would like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested community members to tonight's Board of Education meeting. I'd like to remind everyone, this is a meeting of the Board of Education, held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public comment during the meeting in the Public Participation section on the agenda. First thing up is to approve the minutes, I'm going to make a motion to approve the minutes for the November 4th, November 19, and November 25th, 2019 meetings. If I could have a second, please.
I have a second there.
Thank you, Mrs. Grassley, is there any discussion? If not, call the rule, please.
Blount Dresch.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Senator Hardey.
Aye. And that takes us to Special Reports.
Okay, I asked Dr. Potajil, Tony Potajil, to come speak to the board about our Ed Choice initiative that's happening in the State House. I believe most of you know who Tony is. Tony also works for the life for high quality education. He's a former superintendent, he actually worked in our district for a short while years and years ago. He has extensive knowledge in school finance. He's a resident, and he's also very much an advocate for public education. He is helping the area superintendents navigate through this thing called Ed Choice. I asked him to come today to give some background on the program and also where it is right now in terms of its final form, and allow the board to ask him any questions that they might have.
Good. And my, I have your boys all graduating, so, all successful, well, two still live in the area. Both bright and amazing teachers. So I just came from Chicago, so I didn't know what time it was here.
I know.
I'm here on time this week. Alright, so, let me just give you, I'll give you a real quick overview. I'm sure you've got questions. And you probably can be happy with kind of where we're at because we're not quite there yet, but we're, I'll at least give you an update today. So if you've been paying attention on the Ed Choice pieces, these couple, a couple things came out of the last budget, out of H, came out of 161, but things, there are a couple things that happened beginning in 14 and also in 16 that changed the eligibility criteria. That we had been under an Ed Choice scholarship program that was really poverty-based. So the districts that, the buildings that were eligible for scholarships first had to be identified as as a failing school, and then students who had access to those scholarships had to be in that school, and then they had to identify they're poverty-based. And it was, I think it originally was at 100%, then it was at 200% in this. And so that's really what Ed Choice was. So we never really affected the districts that quite frankly I represent because one is that we, they're all fairly high-achieving, successful districts, and this where you didn't, if you do have poverty students, we all have them, if you didn't, they would have had access to the scholarship. And the scholarship was paid through the state funding. So the state, they applied for scholarship, and the state would reimburse the charter school wherever they went directly. So it wasn't coming out of your budget, it was coming out of your budget. So they established that, and that was, that was what was working. So what happened? Well, a couple things happened. In 2016, they changed the criteria of how you get to be identified as a school or a school building. And what's, what caused the delay and kind of this all ramping up now was, we had changed testing at the time, if you remember, Park, we had Park, we went from Park, the Park testing program when we moved to Adu. And when they made the changes, everyone, they didn't want instituted them because we were in this testing transition. And it had changed something in the law that was, it was used to be an "and" to get identified, "and" and an "or", and then it just became an "and". And no one could figure out why it changed, but it changed. And so it kind of caught up to this year, and so a couple things happened on the timing was, because of the Park testing, they didn't go back, they had to go all the way back to 2014 to get a year, testing year, so they were using 2014, 2017, and 2018 are your three testing years. And so, I hear a solid, well, you should have known. Well, first of all, you don't know what's on your report card till you know it's on your report card, and you don't know what, how these things all line up until you figure it out. In fact, you gotta go all the way back to 2014, really caught everybody off-guard. But the criteria really changed from a more overall to very focused look at your achievement of your buildings. So for example, at the high school, you know, graduation, your graduation rate is a focus. So where you would have had maybe an overall grade or something that would have been more inclusive, now we're looking at buildings and identifying them specifically on specific components of the report card. So value-added, early literacy, those things, they mushroomed the number of schools that were on because, you know, you sell one as an example because I ended up talking to the superintendent there. They, that elementary building that's on the list has an A in achievement, and an A in gap closing, and a D in value-added. And, you know, maybe hard for us to explain to you how they got the D in value-added, but they have a D in value-added, and they have two Ds over that time period, they're on the list. So we have an over-identification of districts and buildings on the list.
How many schools are on the list now?
Just over 1,200, I think, are on the list in the state.
And one of our issues is the value-added, you know, they take the score in 2014, 18, and 19. In between, we had some low grades, but we also had an A and a C. On 15, 16, we got a C, and 14, 15, we had an A. I don't think we're doing anything so abstractively different that how can you be from an A to an F?
Can we clarify value-added, because I think, just clarify that.
Progress, is your progress.
Right, from year to year. Is it the same kids, or is it the kids getting a certain grade from year to year?
So you're tracking student progress against their own progress, against everyone else's progress. So that's why it's really hard to predict, very predictive of where you're at. So for example.
So your group.
You could have, your group could, you could have a hope of kids, if you go from third grade to fourth grade, they move along, they progress. And let's just say they progress 10 points as a collective group. Well, now you have to match them against this, everybody else that was in third grade then moved, because if their collective growth for everybody in the state was 15, your value-added score is going to be a D or a F, because you didn't grow as fast as they did. Even though you may be at grade level, they all may be achieving, they're not achieving as, they're not matching with their peer group. And it's really hard.
Do they count it against, for example, if we, if we are at grade level and we're progressing where we should be, but everybody else may not have been at grade level, and they have progressed better, so they've done better, does that reflect us still as a D?
The positive man, are you, you're looking forward.
Yeah, positive or negative?
Growth, right.
Do you know what I'm saying?
Because you're off the mean, we could spend three hours plus, and you're probably still not going to understand value-added. But what happens in districts with kids with, districts, you have kids at the top of the, there's not a lot of movement, and so movement down gets magnified because you're competing with everybody moving up. So it's, I always use this analogy when I, when I talk to the legislator. It's like batting average, okay? So I'm, well, ex-baseball coach, so bear with me. So I bat 310. If you bat 310 in the majors today, that's pretty good average, right? 310's a really good average. In fact, if you bat 310 over your career, you're probably, you may be in the Hall of Fame if you play 10 to 15 years. So I bat 310, and I lead the league. What's my value-added score? Well, it's the top. Next year, I bat 310. There's five hitters in the league that have added above me because they had a little better year, 311, 312, 315, 318, 320. What's my value-added score? It's lower, because I didn't keep up with the peer group. But it has nothing to do with my achievement. I still had a great year.
So I had also heard that some of the components of value-added are proprietary. Is that something you've heard as well?
It's only, it's only, the proprietary, I heard this, I was at a meeting with the state superintendent, that was last week. It's only the coding that's proprietary. It's not the how they do the calculation, it's that you can't, they won't sell you their code because someone had to create that code. But the, the way they calculate it quite simply is, it's the five of you, how you do in your tests versus where you were, to calculate your growth, and they're going to calculate the five of your growth against everybody else's growth in the entire state. And so if the state is, is going like this, and you're not keeping up, then what, your value-added may drop. Now, they, we will all, everybody admits that value-add should never be graded. That's what's causing this. If it was, you met, you didn't meet, or you exceeded, almost everybody would be in Met. But there's graduations in Met from B to D, you could be a D in Met, but you still met.
So going back to something that Mrs. Grassley kind of brought up, I forget the exact term now, but you're, you're meeting your requirements from a, a grade standpoint. What I, is it, is it, I'm trying to get my arms around value-added, because that's, that's our Achilles' heel, right? It's in, obviously, many, many schools have the Achilles' heel of value-added. But if, but if, so is it essence, so if you have a spectrum of students, so you got a third grade, some are a little bit below, they're two and a half, there's, you know, second, two and a half, some of them are maybe a three and a half. They're all at grade level to some degree, and then you're trying, and value-added is making sure that when they go to the fourth grade, that the student, what's that, four, is, you know, was the three and a half is now four and a half, and that the one that's two and a half is now either at three and a half and going up?
No, it's a predictive tool, so it's not really, so it's saying, if you're here, you should be here based upon where you expect the growth and where everybody else is, and when you don't get it. But it, but it's calculating that student's growth against everybody's growth in the entire state.
And so, what I guess, what I, the thing is that you get penalized for kids who are already achieving at X, at good growth anyway, and so their predicted growth is going to be.
It's harder for the students.
It's harder for us.
It is harder.
Right, and so when you have a school district like us, when we have achieving students to begin with, it's almost like we get penalized for it.
And again, I may be totally missing the boat, and I, you know, so, so please correct me if I'm wrong, but, but if you have a student that, that is excelling, I mean, and you still, through value-added, you're trying to measure increased growth, I mean.
State's trying to measure their acceleration against everybody else's.
I know, but is it, unless, unless that student eventually moves up into a grade, advances an extra grade, I mean, I don't know how you.
No, it's in the test, because they'll tell you that the test don't have ceilings now. So they can, they can.
I mean, this, this, I, I, this is probably simple for many people.
It is.
Yeah, yeah, it was very good.
It's not simple.
I've never heard that Tony in that hopes to explain.
I couldn't tell you how many come up with these.
That was fantastic.
I mean, that's, I mean.
It's not, it's not simple, but there, I will say, there is value in knowing, I would say this when I was at, if I was at West Houston, there's value in knowing how well my, my upper kids are doing against everybody, other upper kids, because you can get complacent and then move if they ask them. The problem is you get, you get a grade that's not reflective of what's happening in the district. So when you get a D or an F, when you get an F in value-added, you go, wait a minute, we, we, our PI Spurs, 108, 108, 109, I don't know what I'm doing wrong.
Right, that's the point, is that we don't know what to, I mean, this is my perception, we don't know what to focus on to improve that.
So value-added has caused a lot of districts to get their buildings on the list because they've had a D or an F over the last two years, even though their achievement is very high. That's a problem. So that, that's actually helping, helping us in the argument of fixing this, because this single focus on the specific components of the report card is a problem. Because it doesn't, it doesn't make sense when you look at the other things in a building and say, wait a minute, this building's at an A in achievement, they're closing the gap with their subgroups, but they got a D in value-added. Well, they shouldn't be on the list. And, and it's so absurd that that's what legislators are seeing, they're going, wait a minute, we got to fix this. The other measure that's putting a lot of the elementary buildings on is the measure for early literacy. Because remember, that measure is not on the overall achievement of your third graders, it's on the ones who are your adverse readers, because they're trying to get those over the finish line. So again, if you have 100 kids, and 90 have gotten through the third grade, you have a 90% passage rate, which means you have an A for that. You have 10 kids left to get through. If you get five of the 10, what's your grade?
50%.
It's a D.
Because that's a F, that's a failing. You fail. Even though your passage rate is now 95%. So that, so we have districts getting kicked on because of that. So that, all this conversation on the scholarship piece, and it's acute now because there's financial implications with it, is all bleeding over to the conversation we have about the state report card. Because we got to make these changes on the state report card, because they're impacting how districts are viewed, how we're using the data, how we're making decisions. So whether we evaluate it with a grade, or go back to evaluate it with descriptors, or we fix the early literacy so that it makes some sense that we can look at the whole composite of the students, after this, we've got to do that. So I, I'll come back and talk to the state report card one day, because we're in the middle of doing that. But I, that's critical, because we can fix this now, and you may get on the list again. And it won't be, it's like, well, wait a minute, it makes no sense. So that, that, that's half of the problem, is they over-identify districts based on the criteria. So I'll talk to you about, I'll leave that, put that aside, and we'll talk about the solution in a minute. The second piece was, we're no longer giving scholarships for poverty-based students. We're still doing that, but now we've opened the scholarship program to everybody. So there's no income adjustment. So if your district or building is then identified, now, it's different for elementary as it is for high school. For elementary, you had to be in the elementary building. You could leave that elementary building and go to a, a school that will take scholarships, and it has nothing to do with your income, it's because your building was identified as failing. The high schools is much different, because not only are you talking about high school students who are in the building, it's any high school student who's a resident of the Pageville Township schools who may never be in your school. So if the high school's identified as a, is on, on the Ed Choice list, and I, and if, I have a family, my child's going to Lake Catholic, we'll use Lake Catholic.
It says Pageville Township, you mean Riverside.
I mean Riverside, I'm sorry. Remember, I worked a long time ago when we were in. What? Hey, this was still the Beavers.
We are, we are now.
Thank God. Alright, don't do that, you really messed me up. So if the high school's on the list, and you're a sophomore there, next year, if you're on the list, you can apply for scholarship, and you'll get a scholarship. It's nothing based on, not a need-based scholarship, it's simply, the high school's on the list, and you have to go. So it's non, it's residents who live in the area, who are not at your high school, who you never had a dime for, because they're, they're not even on your, they're not on your funding formula.
And how much is it? This is, this is what affects us most, because the high school's now on the list. And we've estimated, we have 292 high school students that are currently attending Lake Catholic, MCL, and a few others. So those students will be eligible to apply for a $6,000 scholarship that comes directly out of our funding. So we've gotten $0 for those students, but then it'll be a deduction from our funding.
So my understanding too, that even though we're on the list this year, next year, that the year after, if we're not, once they're in, they're in, right?
Yeah, once you get the scholarship, you always have.
So even if we're off the list, we still pay all the way through that cohort.
I didn't know that.
Well, in elementary, that, it's different, because it's not as open, so it's, it's kindergartners coming in, so if your elementary building is on, but if that kindergartner gets a, gets a scholarship start, they have it all the way through high school, to the graduate.
Even if, even if your high school isn't on the list.
Even if your person's not on the list.
Good.
And even if you come off the list. And now, the difference is, before, the state had a scholarship fund where they were paying those scholarships out of. Now the scholarship fund is out of your budget, and it includes your state share plus whatever you have to put in.
So it's not even like open enrollment, where if we, if we have a student in our district that's going elsewhere, we at least get their money, and then we send money out. Now, we don't even get the money.
Yeah, we don't get the 21.5%.
Right, we don't even get that either.
We get zero.
That's like crazy.
Yeah, well, it is, and they're saying it is, and depending on who you talk to down there, they will say, they never intended that. So, so that, but that's good, because what you don't want them to say, yeah, we intended to do that, and, you know, too bad, you, we're not going to change it.
Now, is it, do, the students that qualify for the scholarship, is the private school that's receiving those funds, are they required to give a $6,000 discount?
Yes, and they have to be approved, they have to be approved by the department as a, as an Ed Choice.
Which is an application process.
Well, I sent you the list, I know Lake Catholic's on the list. They're already, they've been on the list.
But they also have to participate, in my understanding as well, is that they have to participate in the, in the statewide testing.
Yes, yes, those students have to be tested.
So if they don't participate in the testing, they.
Then they can't be an Ed Choice scholarship school, and the state and the department, they would lose their application.
So what, before they didn't have to.
Is that a public list?
No, they've always got to take the test, when they were, yes, there's a, I, Jim has done lists.
But that's, so just to recap, make sure I'm tracking, we have 292 students living in our district who go to some high school elsewhere by choice, by their choice. Next year, they can apply for a scholarship. We've never received any allocation at all, but we would still owe $6,000 in essence to, to those, those schools, but we've never received any state funding for that.
Right, and you will not get any state funding, because they will not be, they will not be students in your district.
Right.
So they won't even increase your, your, your SF3 money, though, you'll get what you're going to get now, all the way through.
Those basically about 1.7 to 1.8 million dollar hit to our budget.
It's below, it's a below the line item, D.
Is that a 2021 thing?
Would you say that, so that's, you have your state allocation, and then they subtract out?
Not current, just maybe.
Open enrollment.
Where your enrollment stuff is, all the stuff. Peterson scholarships, give your, you know, the, all your scholarship things that are below this, you know, the line item, and a lot of it come out, and it'll go direct, it'll be just money you won't get on your, on your state chair.
But they're not going to be subject to the same state evaluation system that we are, if they, if they receive that.
Yeah, but they're not held, they're not held to the same accountability, so you, they could be a failing school and still take kids, and still get the scholarship.
Okay, so they, they don't lose your eligibility if they have the equal, the same issue that we have?
Yeah, right, they're, you can't come off their list, then, with the way that you get on the list.
They participate, but they don't.
So they, they, literally, if they, if they were the, if they were at, had an overall grade of D, they could still take scholarship students.
Jesus, it should be like if they're, you know, getting a failing grade or whatever, they'd be the same criteria as we do. They don't get anything either.
Alright, so those, so those are two issues, right? Remember, how you get on the list, and the financial impact of what you're, when you're at. So we've, we've been, spent a lot of time talking about this with, on the Senate side, and I'll tell you why. So just to recap of why you're in the alliance, so I, you know, your Senator's Eklund, who I've had a really good relationship over a long period of time with, but he's only one senator down there. So we've been in contact with, I wrote my list, so Senator Nolan has been briefed on this issue. Senator Lehner, who's out of Dayton, who's the Senate Education Chair, has been briefed. Senator Kuntzey, who's in the Columbus area, she's got Dublin, Upper Arlington, I think Hilliard, they're all on the list. You got Senator Blessing, who's in the Cincinnati area, he's got Sycamore, Indian Hills. It's amazing, some of the districts on the list. And Senator Wilson, who's also down in the Cincinnati area. So we, we need more than one person to work on this, and unfortunately, they're all not in a position to move a solution through, because the originator of this, of this language is Senator Huffman, who's in Lima, which we don't have any membership in Lima. So, and Senator Huffman, depending who you talk to, it would appear to be, is, is in line to be the next Senate President. So he's in a very strategic spot, number one. Ed Choice is been, something that he's been pushing for a long time, he's been building on all this stuff. And so we've been working, we've had a meeting with his office, and so we, here's where we are today, and we're not going to get a solution until January, because they ran out of time. So they, they all, they all acknowledge, Senator Huffman acknowledges that we got an issue with how we identify. It's too single-focused. So we've had a lot of conversation, in fact, I spoke to Senator Lehner a number of times over the weekend, a couple weeks ago, to get away from single-focused identification to a more broad-based look at your buildings. So what'll probably happen if they go this route, they'll either use overall grade for a district, or overall building grade, and originally, and we're not there yet, because we haven't, I haven't seen the devils of the details, I know they're working on it, they want to just do A and B. And so we've been arguing about, no, you have to include A, B, and C, because if you made C districts failing districts, you basically made C a failing dis, a failing grade on the test.
Which means, so then all of our buildings would be considered on that list, not just the high school, but other school districts that have maybe elementary schools on, high performing districts, maybe two schools on the list, but their grade might be a B or an A. They might want it because it takes two off the list.
Alright, well, maybe we'll get both, maybe we'll get either, your overall grade is an A, B, or a C, or your building grade is an A, B, or C. The only thing I've heard is that there, if you may have, your overall grade for the district is C, but you have, you have an elementary building with two Fs, you know, multiple Fs, that may not wash out. I, I, we have to work on this, we've been, we've been really hammering this hard, but we think that will help with the identification piece, especially if you go at least with overall, an overall grade somewhere, either a combination with the district and the building, or the building alone. We got to figure this out, because it can't be so single-focused, because we're going to have districts on that don't need to be on, and actually, it's helping us.
My concern is, whatever it is, it can't be where it's going to put all of our buildings on, on that list. Right now, we have Riverside High School, Riverside Campus, we just can't have.
Well, that's why I think it's got to be a combination, it's, if you got a B overall grade, that should take you off, just, just leave that district alone. Yeah, they may have one building out there that may be struggling, but it's probably, but if we have to go to, we have to go to building grades too, that's better than where we're at, because where we're at right now is, is you're going to get on to your value-added score.
Every district in Lake County has at least one building on it, except Perry. Fairport has two, Kirkland one, Madison one, Mentor two, Pageville City five, Perry zero, Riverside one, Wickliffe two, and Willoughby State four.
It's been pretty, pretty inclusive.
It's what, 1,230 schools statewide, something like that.
So is the solution to this special legislation, because this was part of the budget for last year?
Yeah, well, let me finish, let me finish, we're almost there.
Sorry.
I know, you're good, I, I know how you work with it. Network, you're good, you set me up for the next part, I love it, I love it.
We did not talk previously.
We have not talked, we have not talked. Alright, so with the fixed identification, and then fixed this funding piece, and they all kind of admit that this, this, this reach into the high school was an overreach. One blames, Huffman blames the department, the department blames the legislation, they're going to fix that. It'll be eighth graders coming in to your high school, but they've got to be there for a year. That's what we're, that's what the rule was before, you had to be in the building and say, okay, I got to get out of here because it's failing, now I want to get a scholarship to go. Not, well, I don't want to go, because I was going to go there anyway, and there, and I'm going to get that. So that, that, that's work, they're working on that, and if you read, I think Governor DeWine came up with something this weekend about allocating more dollars at the state level, so these are not deductions from the school. That's going to be really hard to do in the second year of the budget. But he's talking about that, because they're, they're recognizing that there's a financial impact to what they did, and they didn't give you any more money in the year two of the budget to help you. So where are we, where are we from a legislative standpoint? So we need, this needs, this, we need an amendment to not only 161, but some other pieces of this from prior years, so they got, we got to go into legislative, we got to go into language and make the changes. So SB 89, which is a Career Tech dereg bill, is in the House. Guess who's the sponsor of that bill? Senator Huffman. So we're, we've been talking about getting, using that bill as a vehicle to put these amendments on, because the House could pass it out of that committee, pass it on the House, and get it over the Senate, and have the Senate pass it, and then get it off to the Governor's office. And it has to go through as an emergency bill, because February 1st is the beginning date for applications for next year. And once people get their applications in, the legal people, they're going to, we're going to have issues with contractual obligations based on the law. And now we're clawing all that back. So they're due to come back in committee June 21st, and their session's planned the next two. January, January, I'm sorry, January. And their session's planned that month. So they, they can get this done, but Senator Huffman, if Huffman brings something to that, to that committee as amendments, and they're all agreeing, it will go through quickly. That's why we got to do a lot of background work to kind of move this ahead. If it gets beyond that point, we're going to have problems, because it's going to get, it's. That's why we got to do a lot of background work to kind of move this ahead. If it gets beyond that point, we're going to have problems, because it's going to get, it's going to get memorialized. And then we're going to have trouble clawing that back.
It's a week?
Week and a half. Two weeks, two weeks in January. As long as they get them before February first, and as long as it's done as an emergency bill, and as long as the governor signs it.
How likely is that?
I, I.
Yeah.
I would say better than fifty fifty, maybe, maybe sixty forty, because I know they're all talking about it, they all recognize it. The senators and I, just all those people who are talking, are all ours, are all Republicans, they want to get something done. They've all heard from our members who are in those districts about this needs to change, it needs to change from February first. So from that standpoint, I think that movement's going, and I think they would have liked to have done it now. So, but it's just, there wasn't, there wasn't the time between now and the holidays to get it done.
So there, what kind of opposition is there from the folks that are in the failing districts that, that really, I mean, truly benefit from this? At the end of the day, those kids like probably should get choice, you know, at the end of the day, not districts.
Well, I guess I worry more not there, and I've said this to Senator Eklund, and I think he's echoed that. I think we, we, they may admit inadvertently, set an expectation to, to private and parochial students in an area that, that a scholarship is waiting for them, that they never thought they'd ever get. And now it's out there, and that wasn't their intention, so they're going to have to explain that sometimes you put, you, you put language through, you pass a policy and it doesn't work the way you think it's supposed to. You know, there's a lot of unintended consequences, things that happen in Columbus, we live that all the time in the education world, this is one of them. It's not your fault that you're asking for it to be changed. It, it just doesn't make sense to do it the way they're thinking about doing it, and they've got to make some fixes along the way. So you know, I've, I've said this, and I know I said something to Jim, I, I think you, I would be understanding that they're getting a lot of calls from parochial parents, who are anticipating that this is a scholarship that they're going to get. And they're, I know they're organizing, and they're getting ready for the February one application date. And that may all change. And what I would say if they were here today would be, based on the conversations in Columbus, I think they believe that what they put together isn't working the way they thought it was going to be working, and they're going to make changes, and before you, you jump to a conclusion that you think this is the way it's going to be, things change legislatively, they can change all the time. So the goal is still to get scholarships to needy kids in areas where their schools maybe aren't, are underperforming, that's not changing. But when you have districts that are doing well academically, to open it up for scholarships, you know, wasn't the intention, I don't think, of many of the legislators. I can't speak for all of them. I think Senator Huffman, who was here, he would say, he had his druthers, everything would get a scholarship. That they would fund every student wherever they were at. You know, we're working on the school funding bill, the Cup Anderson work is on having money follow a child. So, you know, if you were getting six thousand per kid, you wouldn't be complaining either. And so it's, we're underfunding the formula in a way that makes it very difficult, because it pits us against our own local community. And I worry that we're going to, we're going to have some hurt feelings amongst some people in our community who think that, well, I lost my scholarship. Well, in reality, you may, you may never really had it, because now that they figured out really what, how this thing kind of is, you know, roll out, they're, they're going to do some things to make some change. So we'll be working in earnest to come back in January to try to make this happen in this timeframe, because it's going to be critical for you. Otherwise, yeah, you may not have all two hundred ninety-two, but you'll have some portion, you'll have a population seeking scholarships.
That's the interesting thing, I don't know if you're going to report to the board today about it, but we have less kids going out. I mean, that's less of an impact on our budget now, because kids want to stay here.
I'll bet on the, on the PowerPoint, you know, that, but yeah.
So I'll let Jim know in January what our talking points are, since it may change. Do you have any things that are there that we absolutely support? And then that's the conversations that he, you and he need to have, with probably Senator Eklund to know that, hey, this is something that you got to support, we got to get it through. As we kind of move through this. And then I'm doing the same thing, you know, with, with our, with our schools in Cincinnati, and Toledo, and, and Columbus. Trying to pull this over to the finish line.
Any more questions? Thanks for coming.
It was worth, it was worth fifteen.
He flew in from Chicago and drove from the airport here.
What?
Seven twenty dollars.
Yeah, I drove all the way from Chicago, no, I didn't, no. I drove from Phoenix, that's right, to Phoenix.
That can prepare you for you.
Thank you for being here.
You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Alright, next up is old business, anyone's got anything?
Next, Susan.
Yeah, it's going.
New business? Alright, that takes us to the Board of Education Committee and Liaison Report. First up is the Superintendent's Business Advisory. Jim, I know you sent me an update, I'm trying to pull it up. We had a meeting last week at seven in the morning. I can't ever make it to the morning meetings. Do you just want to update? I know you sent me an email, but you were there, so you're going to be able to do our job talking about it, I can. The next meeting looks like it's February nineteenth, I do see that.
Yeah, at the, at the meeting we had a student group called Students, it's called SIDE, it's Student Initiative for Developing Excellence. Leadership presentation, we had students come in, and they were discussing experiences regarding tutoring and participating in instructional delivery in lower grade bands at the Riverside Campus. The whole idea behind the program is to get the kids out of their comfort zone, make them do some leadership types of tasks, just to build their self-confidence. And they gave a presentation along with teachers, Mrs. McIntyre and Mr. Echols, explaining the scope and the purpose of the program. And it was just really interesting just hearing what the kids had to say. We also had a discussion around a Riverside roadmap. We are exploring the possibility of creating a pamphlet to guide what to expect at various grade levels. The literature would provide sections as made for parents and students, knowing what's coming ahead, you know, in the, in the next few grades. And we also got some feedback from the participants, the committee members who went on a tour of Riverview.
What did they think?
They thought it was great. Yeah, they, they really liked, they really liked the buildings.
Good, okay, thank you. Curriculum and programming, boosters, Mr. Miley is not here. I don't know, most of that curriculum, most of that.
Must, must be.
It is.
Did you guys have a meeting since the last one?
We didn't.
Okay. Boosters, I know that I was talking to Kelly Flunner, somebody did agree to take over the RPTA, because Lori has been the chair and cannot continue to chair it, since she's coming out of the board, somebody from.
Jafren Murray.
Yeah.
Thank you.
From Baca.
Okay. Alright, next up, finance, audit personnel, strategic plan, Mrs. Grassi.
We haven't had a meeting since the last one that we had previously in November, where we talked about the five-year forecast, and since that was the last meeting, I've got nothing to say.
Okay. Buildings and grounds, operations, alumni, Mr. Ray.
Alumni Association canceled their December meeting, so nothing to report there. We did, right before this meeting, we had a Buildings and Grounds, we had Mr. Easely from, from Icon here to give kind of an update on where things are at. So they, they, I guess from an overall perspective, a little while ago, they had a punch list, they had a meeting with the architect, they went through the punch list. And most of that punch list has been taken care of, but there are still, you know, with anything else, it's, I have a Navy background, every time you get a new ship, there's a shakedown cruise, and where things need to be tweaked, tweaked, and we're certainly in that phase now, they're tweaking some boiler issues, some other HVAC issues, electrical issues, I mean, nothing, nothing major, obviously the schools are still open and functioning, but they're, they're, they're tweaking it to, to get it to perfection. And I'm trying to think if there's anything else. I know Mr. Placco's going to talk a little bit about the budget regarding the, the schools and some other things when he is up, so I'll let him cover that. And then Mr. Wayne did also talk about some things in other buildings. New, new doors by the gym are going to be put in at Lemuth. Those doors, frankly, I think were there when, when, I went to school there many, 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 many years ago.
Actual gym doors or the exterior?
I'm sure the exterior doors by the gym, I should be more specific.
Used to be the entrance.
The glass?
Right, there used to be the entrance when I was a student there. And there are other things as well, but Mr. Wayne, since you are here, I'll, I'll turn the floor to you.
Right, right now we, just a few topics. Looking for our maintenance position to still be filled. We have four seasonal workers, carpet cleaning and some miscellaneous tasks at Riverview and Parkside that we're going to be doing. Door replacements on campus are the next big issue for us. And we've replaced the ones that lead into John R. Williams by the door. Main entrance that everybody fobs into, those will be replaced. We've got a PO number to get those taken care of. We replaced another door, the, the old shop room at John R. Williams, I'm going back to Zach Hammond's room now, that door was a problem, we've been written up, and we got that replaced, door at the Fieldhouse. By the back door was falling apart, we replaced that. And right now we're looking at moving on to Lemuth. And trying to get, probably going to have to go out to bid on these doors because of the expense, and then deciding what kind of glass we want to put in there, because we are going to be in that building in the future. That's kind of a.
When do you plan to do that? Is it like a summer project?
That's the goal. We had made some, we had some discussions this morning about other doors, and decided that that's something that was going to go ahead of the class right now. So probably start working on it after the first of the year. I just don't know how slow it's going to be once we start looking at the glass, are we going to put ballistic three glass? Kind of the nuances about it, so I'll keep the board updated.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Alright, thank you, thank you.
Okay.
Policy and legislative, can you take that, Mr. Jop, please?
Hi, we haven't had a policy meeting, because we haven't had any board policy updates to review. Are we going to get any of those soon?
I think so, yes.
It's going to be a big package, I have a feeling, because we haven't had any since summer. And legislators, legislators, Mr. Pot, or Dr. Pot is responsible for all that, so I've got nothing. Excellent.
That takes us to the Superintendent's Report.
Alright, on the, on the board agenda, we have a resolution to enter into an agreement with Pangeo Township over half of the hand property, and I wanted to give the board an update on that, and also, I might be watching our board meeting, how we got to this agreement. It's a little bit complicated, so bear with me. Alright, so we had an appraisal done on the hand property back in early two thousand sixteen, and, and since we were looking at releasing the property sometime soon, we needed to get something a little bit more updated. So we entered into a, a contract for an appraisal with Charles Ritley Company, and we asked them to do four different scenarios. The first scenario is just the property as it sits right now, as it is, zoned residential. And the appraisal came back at five hundred and forty thousand dollars. Now, in February, like I said, of two thousand sixteen, the property was six hundred and ninety thousand dollars for, you know, the whole, the whole parcel. This appraisal that we had done just recently, like I said, was for the multiple scenarios. If this property is to remain as it is, it would be residential with non-conforming use, because we have a school on it. You know, if a school's on it, it shouldn't be really residential. And if we keep it residential, and there's a school on it, that use would have to be for, if it's, it continues as a school use, it would have to be, again, used as, operated under the non-conforming zoning. So under those circumstances, it's five hundred and forty thousand dollars. Thing is, Township does not want to keep this as a residential, they want it as community service institutional. And that's what, what it is used for at this point, is because it's a school in the park. So the second scenario was to keep it residential, but also split it. Again, it's not going to happen, because the Township wants it to become community service. The reason for the appraisals is to find out what the property is worth under these certain circumstances, and decide which route we wanted to go in order to release the property. Again, you don't have control over whether or not they want to zone it CS, but we could push back if we wanted to. And that's not the route I believe that we're going to go. But under scenario two, the property is worth six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, four hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the front, and a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for the back. The acreage is slightly off, because we did move the split a little bit closer to the south there. But the problem with this scenario is it doesn't conform to the Pangeo Township's comprehensive plan to have this zoned CS. The plan would require the entire property to be rezoned either community service or institutional. If we didn't decide to split it, they could zone this whole property CS. And if it's a CS property, it's going to take value away from, from the property. So we have a couple of different options. One is to allow it to become CS, or on the board's behalf, split the property. They would zone the back end CS, because that's the part they're interested in, and the front would be commercial. And we're going to get into that scenario, because by doing that, it would give us a lot more value on the front end, because it's a commercial property, not CS and not residential. This is what it would look like in terms of value if it was zoned CS. Now you're going to notice that the back portion is a lot lower than it would be if it was zoned and split residential. But again, it's not going to happen. You're talking a hundred and, what, sixty-five thousand dollars? Or a hundred, I'm sorry, a hundred, a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Now, if it's zoned re, community service institutional, it would be only worth sixty thousand dollars, okay? And the front end doesn't really gain much value either. So this is a proposed scenario that's on the board agenda, is that we split the property, the front end is commercial, the back end is CS. And that would work out for both entities, right? Because Pangeo Township would like the property to remain a park, I think our board would like to as well. And the front end has gained some value, because now it's zoned commercial. The total property value increased an estimated a hundred and five thousand dollars from the residential split. And what's going to happen is, depending on how you look at it, is if you have the, the back end, you're losing about a hundred and five thousand dollars by going from one sixty-five to sixty on the back end of the property. Okay? But the front end is going to, it's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So depending on where we fall in terms of the sale, the increase is anywhere between a hundred and five thousand dollars to two hundred and ten of the increase. Losing one oh five on the back end, gaining a hundred and five to two hundred and ten on the front end of a commercial property. Now those are all numbers and estimates and everything else, we haven't sold the property yet, but that's the way the appraisal works. Now, there's other items to the agreement that I want everyone to understand. Pangeo Township will purchase the property for forty thousand dollars. Now we said it was worth sixty thousand dollars in the appraisal, but we negotiated forty thousand dollars, but in that agreement, Pangeo Township will pay for all the survey and tidling services, and we thought that that would be somewhere around ten to fifteen thousand dollars, Gary, is what we, remember.
Because they're doing a, this boundary survey, and all the properties is quite expensive.
Yeah, so they're, they're going to pick up all of that, we're not going to pay a penny for it. Riverside will submit for a lot split, requiring the front to be zoned to commercial, and rear to be zoned community service institutional. And the property shall remain a park. Now this second line here says, but if the Township intends to sell the property in the future, they'll receive forty thousand dollars of the initial proceeds, and will share the remaining funds fifty-fifty with Riverside. This is part of the agreement, but they've assured us that they have no intention on, on selling this property. Basically, that is in there just in case that with anything else, you got, you know, trustees coming and going that down the line, that if some other trustees got in there, that they're going to make a buck off the property, that at least we're protecting ourselves, and not thinking that they're going to speculate that property.
The other part of that, though, is too, is that they're putting deed receivable. The other part of that though is too, is that they're putting deed restrictions on there too, that we're going to actually require them to, they would have to go to a vote in the community. If they actually, they can't even sell it without it being voted on by the community, so it's...
One of the other items not too many people know about is the fact that they wanted to also rezone our remaining elementary schools in Paintsville Township as C.S. And that concerns us a little bit here because if we pass our second phase of our facility plan and we eventually take down, take off a line of Buckeye and Hale Road too, as well, Hale Road is already offline, then we want to have the ability to try to get what we think that property is worth. Again, C.S., we believe, devalues the property. So, they said they would do that as well. Excuse me. And then the last part of this is that the name of the park will remain either Clydesey Haddon Park or Haddon Park. My recommendation to the board is to, you know, agree to the agreement that we have as a resolution today. And it's my understanding that if that's the case, we're setting out a joint press release out of our office and theirs, telling the public that this is what's going to happen with the property, that we're happy to keep it a park, and we're also protecting our assets as well in the process. Excuse me again, I'm sorry. I'm not getting emotional or something, so.
And that they're fully in agreement with that. And Paintsville Township is fully in agreement.
I think they're having a meeting tomorrow.
It is tomorrow, yeah.
I have coffee, thank you. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Treasures report. You good, you all right?
All right. Set a few things to go over tonight. We'll start with the first slide here. You know, a few, the last minute or two minutes ago, we approved the refinancing of some of our debt. So, we had a conference call with Moody's recently, and they decided to sign us an A1 rating, which basically means there was no upgrade, no change to the rating from what we received back in spring of 2017. We were going to go out there and do a formal presentation, but then after the financing district did not pass, we kind of felt that this was the outcome that was going to occur. It wasn't worth the expense of traveling out there. And we did it by conference call. In the report that they issued on December 10th, it said some of our credit strengths were healthy tax base and socioeconomic profile of ongoing development in the district and recent tend of positive operations that established a healthy financial position. So, they recognize some of the, you know, obviously the passage of the operating levy and some of the things that we've done to improve our financial position. Some of the credit challenges, long-term trend of declining enrollment. Obviously, we had a spike this year, but historically, there's been a decline. And then one of the other things is expected growth in debt burden because of significant capital needs. They kind of hold us back as far as, because we're considering the second phase of building, you know, a larger facility with fairly large debt. Even though we haven't even gone that route yet, they kind of hold that against us. And it exposed to underfunded state costs sharing pension plans, which they currently just put on every school district in Ohio. And also, the report lists factors that can lead to an upgrade, continued growth in reserves, increased operational stability, including sustained improvement in enrollment and passage of a pending operating levy, which is basically the financing district, and expansion of the district's tax and revenue base that moderates the burden of upcoming debt issues. So, basically, they're saying, if you're going to build a new high school, you got to pass a levy to do that, which obviously is no secret. Some of the things that could lead to downgrade, weakening position of district financial position and substantial growth in debt and pension burden.
Just one thing about the pension burden. The pension burden isn't even the districts, it's the states.
It's the state pension system, but they have, because of the government Gatsby rules, they allocate that to all the public entities. Even though it's not directly our burden, it's the burden of pension system itself, they hold that against everybody. It's one of those things, you know, there's issues, obviously, there's no issues with longevity of the system and ways they can make those changes, contributions and benefit payments and cost savings adjustments to help mitigate some of those issues. So, it's not just going to be all sudden, they're going to start building all the districts for that because they're still completely separate entity. So, this is a quick overview of the Moody's rating system. Our rating was A1, which is basically obligations rated A or considered upper median grade and subject to over credit risk. So, basically, you have triple A rating, which is the highest you can go. A double A rating, you have one, two, and three, and then single A, one, two, three. So, we're at the high end of the A rating. We were hoping to get upgraded to a double A three, but that did not occur. So, we're going to compare to other districts in the area. The left side is Lake County. If it's N/A, it just means that that district doesn't have a rating through Moody's. Big C, Kirtland's a double A two, so they're higher. Madison's an A three, so they're two notches lower. Paintsville's an A two, they're one lower than us, but that's back from 2014. We have the same rating as will be Eastlake, is A1. Which seems kind of odd because they went through some issues over there, but from what I've heard, that they're probably going to be downgraded in the near future due to the failure of their operating levy. Keston West, Joga, A1 and A2, so they're both rated higher than us. And on the right-hand side, you're going to see some of the Kibboggy districts that are closer to us. Beechwood and Orange, obviously, a triple A. But you know, their district A1 are Brea and Orangeville. Orangeville bases on an A1 because they have healthy cash reserves in their district. Next slide here is a little, this is kind of to change gears, kind of go back to going on the five-year forecast discussions, how I always say a five-year forecast is based on the best information available at that time. So, when I did the five-year forecast presentation, I did not do the slides on open enrollment numbers because O.G. had not updated those figures for this fiscal year. And so, each month, we get two payments from the state. We get number one to number two. And this payment report here shows a comparison of those two reports. So, November number two came out on, I think, November 22nd. We had approved our five-year forecast on the 19th and filed it with O.G. on the 20th. And so, they updated the open enrollment numbers. And so, it's hard to see, if you look at lines H1, H1 and H2, the difference in the deduction, line H, open enrollment, that's the net of in and out. So, we'd be a net reduction of 1.2 million is now only a reduction of 664,000. So, that's a $590,000 swing in just that payment. So, it's a 47% decrease in that deduction, which means an increase in operating funds for us.
We're doing better in both categories.
So, right. And to the total bottom line, there's some other adjustments there. So, our net funding is 10% better now than it was when we did the forecast. But in the forecast, I predicted, because we know how many students we bring in, we don't necessarily know how many go out. So, in the forecast, I predicted 663,000 for our open enrollment in. The number is now 626,000, so it's fairly close, or, excuse me, 689,000. But open enrollment out is where the change happened. I was projecting in the forecast 1.775 out, and it's now down to 1.35. So, it's a good, good change. And so, kind of digging in those numbers, what made up some of that? It's kind of across the board, but the biggest change, oh, I may go through this slide real quick too. This is our comparison of open enrollment. If you look at the, it'd be the fifth column, it says FY 2020 net open enrollment. So, that's our current fiscal year. We take the districts in minus out, and that's the net impact. If you compare that to FY 19, so looking at the far right column, if it's black, it's an increase positive in our favor, or red, it's a decrease not in our favor. So, you can see districts like Fairport, $221,000 swing in our favor. Madison, $107,000 swing in our favor. Angel City, $165,000 swing in our favor, just from changing open enrollment. So, you can see me on the very far right side, so you can see the number of students. We're now in that loss of 111, or last year, we were in that loss of 209.
Where kids are coming in and going out too, right?
And the biggest thing is, all, the kids of all-day kindergarten is the biggest swing. So, this is looking at, the top section's got FY 20. We have 13.86 kindergarten students in, 8.97 going out, for a total gain of 4.89, which is about 29,000. The reason there's points is some students, you know, withdraw through the year or come in late. So, that's why you get points based on the equivalent. Last year was, our open enrollment numbers were 2.19 in, 41.7 out, for a net loss of 39.53 or 237,000. And 32 of those students goes to Fairport. And basically, you know, our parents would send their kids to open enrollment to Fairport for all-day kindergarten with no fees, as opposed to keeping them here at half-day kindergarten in 2019. So, obviously, all-day kindergarten for FY 20 was, you know, obviously, good for everyone's education, but also had a good financial impact on that as well. And I thought it was important to kind of point that out. That's all I have for slides. For the refinancing that we approved a few months ago, we are finally going to market tomorrow. The savings aren't quite as good as they were back when we first started this process because of movements in the market. But we're still looking at about, we're refinancing $13,720,000 of our 38-half-million-dollar debt for savings of about 1.5 million in interest on just that small portion. Still within, well within the benchmark to, that makes sense to do that, so we're going to move forward with that. So, pricing should be happening tomorrow unless somebody more crazy news comes out tomorrow and it causes the merchants to go crazy, the bond market, that is, not the stock market. So, we're going to discount amount on that, and hopefully, by tomorrow afternoon, we'll have that all done and hopefully, lock in those savings. The other thing too, we've been getting quotes. We're already, we have, we contracted with EA Group. There are, it's us, this contractor, they're going through Leroy and doing a pre-demolition inspection so Icon can bid out the demolition cost of Leroy as we work through putting it up for public auction. Because the Township said they can't really afford it, they didn't pass the road levy, they had other financial issues. They said this move forward, they're going to continue to explore options. But we felt that it was probably best just to, because they're both getting pricing and demolition and putting up for public auction, taking a lot of times. We figured we'd go them concurrently, and then that way, if it doesn't sell at public auction, then we can go ahead and move forward with the demolition. The Township would prefer that the building is demolished. They do not want someone to purchase the building that maybe don't send the income to maintain that building and repair that building because there's a lot of issues with wastewater treatment plants and well over there that would be pretty significant to correct. And then the last thing I'm going to do is go over the construction budget. I'm going to pass out this first sheet here, which is double-sided. This kind of lists all the change orders. And the second one, this is the one down of our construction fund. So, the text on this page gets smaller and smaller every month.
Yes, it does.
We haven't gone over it in a while, but it's just a lot of detail that we don't really have to go through. But we're up to 64 change orders in Parkside and 59 at River View.
Where are you looking?
He says Concord.
It says Concord, and that's how we refer to it. So, not really too much to look up, I hear. It just, there are still change orders outstanding. Some of the things Architect and Construction Manager have gone back and forth on, some questions about, you know, was it really a change in the scope of work, or a contractor error, or misunderstanding, things like that. So, there's still some change orders out there. But most importantly, probably just look at the next page. The second handout gave you the construction budget handout. Now, kind of walk through that. It'll probably give it a little more sense. So, right now, in our construction fund, we have a cash balance of 1.7 million remaining at this point. We have outstanding purchase orders of 1,558,000 for a remaining balance of 195,000. That does not include the furniture and used equipment that we charged to the P.I. fund in the tune of about 1.2 million. So, we're basically, we're short approximately a million dollars on the construction project at this point. If you factor in demo of Haddon, Hale, and Leroy, we're right back to our 2.4 million overage that we've been running since before we even signed the construction contract. You know, obviously, there's the purse agreement on tonight's agenda to sell the back half of Haddon. We've been working with the E.S.C. price for Hale Road. So, if we're able to sell that building and take off that demolition cost, which is about 939,000 by the time you include architect fees. So, we have, you know, there's still some things outstanding. We still have potential interest of about 16,000 on the funds. And so, we're hoping that when it's all said and done, we're able to sell. Well, obviously, we're going to be able to sell Haddon at some point. We'll probably get that up for auction here in the near future and hopefully, get to, get it down close to, as close to break even as possible. There's still $136,000 of construction manager contingency leftover. We're going to use those funds for some of those change orders that are still outstanding and hopefully, get some of those funds who go unused so we have a contingency back in the fund. Is there any questions on? That concludes my report. I'll add one more thing, actually. We need to, we can do an hour to be able to get to the buildings and grounds event, but we need to choose our reportational meeting date for January.
So, just do that right now.
That has to be done before the 15th.
Yes.
I mean, do we want to look at Tuesday the 7th? Do we want to stay on Tuesdays?
That works for me.
Lori? Jim?
We have to, we have to have tax budget meeting.
Yeah, that works.
Sunday.
Yeah, we'll do the tax budget hearing.
6:45 PM. 6:45 PM on the 7th is the tax budget meeting. And then the organizational at 7 PM. Sure. You guys okay with that? I care, a lot. You're going to put it in the Google Calendar that a few of us will respond to?
Well, and then I put it in my calendar, and then it syncs with my calendar, and then I have it on twice.
It's everywhere.
Ones in less highlight and ones in darker, yeah, like a dry.
I won't do the meeting invites this time. That way, I'll put it on the calendar, if you sync, they'll be right on the calendar.
Just invite us, because I think like...
I love being invited.
It's fine, just invite me. I feel included.
Really do like it, a lot.
Okay, the Monday board meeting, then my phone blows off at 7 PM on Sunday, I'm like, what?
I know, it's a little very confusing.
Me, Tony, I can't spell. January 7th, right?
Yep.
Is there any way, I just realized, is there any way we can do it actually on Monday, on the 6th? I have playoffs that entire week, on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, for my team, the cheerleaders and basketball team. We're out at South Duke Memorial at Rush. Is there any way you're going to do it on Monday instead?
Okay.
Do you want to do another day? Do you want to do Wednesday? Do you want to do...
We have playoffs Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And the, the, thank but on Friday.
Do the Tuesday the 14th.
Yeah.
I don't know, I prefer to do it the 6th if we could. And this, I'm sorry, did...
Lori can't do it the 6th.
Well, I'm sorry, I thought you, I misinterpreted what you said, sorry.
Or would you rather do Monday the 13th?
Yeah.
Is that better than Tuesday time? Unless we do the 7th, then it's just later than 6:45, because I just, I can't.
What time can you make it?
Unfortunately, we don't have a schedule yet. It's a problem. And I won't have a schedule. Unfortunately, we don't have a schedule yet. It's a problem. I won't have a schedule until, I just got emails today, I probably don't have a schedule till Monday the 6th.
Oh.
Yeah.
Perfect.
I know.
13th, what? That's, that's fine. So, it's Monday.
13th? Thank you, I'm sorry about that.
Sure.
We'll, we'll work around your schedule.
Yeah, all right. So, January, I'm sorry, I have phone problems. And I sent you something email to remind you. So, it's January 13th at 6:45?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
No, I've got nothing scheduled that day.
Okay.
Then you can start tracking.
That does not start until October. We got a little bit of time, we're tracking. All right, we done with treasures report, then? All right, thank you. That takes us to public participation. Anyone wishing to address the Board of Education will be recognized by the Board President. Speakers are requested to identify themselves and their topic. Comments are limited to three minutes. Thank you. Eli, where are you at?
Mr. Horn?
No?
Hi, Dan. Yes, Mark Calcone. Dr. Kellis, can you explain a little bit about the formula that they use for the, in the financial district, since Riverside's supposed to get a more of a share than the previous years? What's the driving force behind that?
I'm gonna turn it over to Gary, but yes, before, under the old formula, we didn't get as much as we were unnecessarily putting in, and things have changed over the years. And now, we got together with the other districts and started talking about making a more equitable formula, what, about a year and a half ago?
Yeah, because previously, the formula was based, the funds were distributed based on enrollment for class one and class two, which is residential and commercial properties. Class three at some point was changed, don't quote me exactly, I think it was two-thirds based on enrollment and one-third based on public utility values. That was done, I don't know, a long time ago, when that was revised. So, that's basically how it is done now. It's done based on enrollment. With, over the years, with electrical, the electric deregulation that occurred, tangible personal property phase out happened, we save reimbursements to the financing district for that. That's all been phased out. So, over the past couple of years since the last renewal, Riverside started receiving kind of less funds than what the levy generates. So, if you took our property tax valuation, Times and Village, it was, we weren't getting our money's worth out of it since the last renewal, because of those phase outs that occurred in the last two budget bills.
It's evening everything out. It's kind of making us whole and also Perry whole.
So, by the, yeah, by the, the new allocation would be, assuming the levy gets renewed, is, it will be based on what each district generates. So, whatever property tax dollars are generated in Riverside, stays in Riverside, or if it's done in Paintsville City, stays in Paintsville City, and so forth, and Perry in Madison. So, that way, it results in increase for us, it gets us dollar for dollar what we've been generating, and takes away that loss that occurred in the past couple of years, just due to those law changes and phase outs.
Yeah, differences around 5, 600,000.
500,000, 600,000 per year.
Originally, like, at least when I started on the board, we were generating, we were actually getting more money than we generated.
For many years, we were receiving more money than was, than Riverside was generating, because basically was the power plant funds were kind of being reallocated, because the formula of enrollment changes was created back in 1990. But over the years, things have changed. The power plants have been devalued from where it used to be, and all those changes kind of shifted the, the way the funds were being allocated. And so, now this was to correct it, so everybody gets what they're generating.
So, this is more of an equitable share with all the members of that financial district?
Yes.
Basically, what we're putting in, we're getting out of it now.
Yeah, okay. One of the things we had thought about as this renewal was coming up is, what if we just abandoned the financing district and put up our own levy, so we just, you know, so it's Riverside levy? The issue is, it would eliminate the 10% rollback to the state reimbursed, and the 2.5% owner occupied credit that the state reimburses. So, basically the tax, it would cause the residential taxpayer to pay 12.5% more to generate the same amount of funds. And then, you know, over time, his values will up, tax rates come down, residential, I think it's 2.28 mils is the current residential rate, and commercial and public utilities paying 4.9 mils. If we pass like a 2.5 mil levy to be on our own, now all three classes pay 2.5 mils, where, you know, we're now residential paying less than commercial and public utilities. So, we kind of emailed that tax rate, which, you know, to the residential taxpayer, it wasn't, didn't seem like it made a lot of sense to do that. That's why we got this new allocation approved, so we can generate what they've been, generates what they've been generating.
Okay, in this financial district, there's more than just property taxes from the residents as going into this fund? There are state funds that go into this also, I said, or?
There were.
I need a clarification, I'm misunderstanding if, but funds are going in there.
Yeah, there was funds from the state as far as tangible personal property tax reimbursement. I think it was somewhere around 5 to 7 million, maybe, at some point, you know, probably five or so years ago. That's all been phased out. But on old, older levies that, you know, were passed before 2013, the state basically paid the first 12.5% of the tax bill on behalf of the residential tax payers, the 10% rollback, and the 2.5% rollback or owner's occupied credit. So, maintaining that levy keeps those rollbacks that come from the state in place, or replacing with a new levy, those would go away, because those go away in all new levies after 2013.
Okay, thank you.
There's something else? It takes us to the consent agenda. Consent agenda provides for a more efficient use of time. Any board member can remove the consent agenda item to be discussed and vote about individually. The first thing up is finance and audit.
Sure, we have a motion to approve the items listed on the finance and audit consent agenda as recommended by the treasurer. Items A through I on the agenda. A second. Thank you. I will read the donations.
Thank you.
Before we have a vote, we have a donation from the Lynch family to the David R. Baker Scholarship Fund. We have a donation from Riverside High School to the David R. Baker Scholarship Fund. We have a donation from AMSCO, which is the Little Miss Parent Organization, to the Lark family. And we have a donation from Gabe Chickenetti to the Riverside Rocks 5K. So, we just wanna thank those folks for their donations. Do we have any other discussion on any of the items A through I? All right, and then can we call a roll?
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Linda Grassi?
Aye.
Motion carried. Personnel.
We have a motion to approve the items listed on the personnel consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent. Items A through F. Can I second?
I'll, I'll second.
I don't think there's any discussion, just that the minimum wage is going up to $8.70 in January, and that is listed on here as an agenda item, just, just a note.
Thank you.
If there's anything else, if there's nothing else, can we call a roll?
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Linda Grassi?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Motion carried. Buildings and grounds operations?
Motion to approve the items listed on the buildings and grounds consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent. Items A and B, we have a second, please.
A second.
Pretty much, Mrs. Grassi, any, any discussion?
No, we'll change the agenda item for the, for the date of the budget year in current framework.
Right, it was, right, it's 13, yeah. And 6:45 on the 15th.
This also includes the sale of the.
This includes the sale of the.
All right, and no discussion, please call a roll.
Linda Grassi?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye, motion carried. And it takes a supportive education update, if anyone's got anything.
I just wanted to, Steve isn't here, and just prepared for his last meeting, and I just wanted to be able to say thank you to Steve for his service on the board course for about four years.
I would just like to invite everybody, you know, before we have our next board meeting, so we will be able to discuss it at the next board meeting, we have the Eadmanic Memorial Scholarship, the talent show that is coming up on January 11th, and that'll be before even our organizational meeting, and that's before we come back to school, but I would invite everybody to come to that.
And I just wish everyone Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
With that, then, I will make a motion to adjourn to executive session at 8:20, 21 PM for the, for discussion of purchase or sale of property. If I can have a second, please.
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Heck.
Call a roll, please. Tom Heck?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Linda Grassi?
Aye.
Thank you very much.